Would you all please rise for the pledge to the flag? I'm trying to get this on the kids. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we get started in all these celebrations of kids in bow ties, which I pretty much love that, it's a party when someone's got a bow tie on, that's awesome. We, I want us to go around, we're real busy, we're busy with lots of different things that people have, accolades people have been getting, awards people have been getting, so we just want to walk and, you know, kind of talk and walk through some of the things that are happening. So Julie, you want to start?
Sure, I'll get it started. There's a very long list, but the things I'd like to point out, congratulations, our color guard won best auxiliary group at one of their recent competitions. So congrats to them. The middle school cheerleaders won regional, so that was super great. And just a shout out to performing arts, went to see the play and actually ran into Mr. Beach there. And it was great, as it always is, great production, so get us going.
So, sorry. The, so the girls and, oh, girls and boys cross-country teams, I think, just finished fourth and seventh. They're right on numbers, girls fourth, boys seventh, recently in state. So that was great. And then the girls soccer team won regions and made it into the state championship. And so nice job by them. And then football just finished their playoff run in a really good game Friday night against Scott County. And we had the ball midfield with the chance to win, but it was a good season by them.
It was. Highlands teacher, Mr. Ron Rozell, received the technology and engineering teacher of the year award. Let's, congrats to him, okay? And then I want to congratulate all the schools, you know, we were K through 12 school, highest ranking school in Kentucky, and we had the top ACT in Northern Kentucky. So I want to go off script a little bit. When I started on the board four years ago, you know, all the things that have happened since then. And, you know, I will tell you that this board talked a whole lot about when we came on the other side of COVID, that we, that a lot of people would have like a little asterisk next to the test scores and say, "Well, that was because of this." And I would say, and you all have heard me say, "I never wanted that to be an asterisk year for our kids," because you all have, you all, your kids are still going to, you know, be doctors and lawyers and teachers and that sort of thing. So I'm just really pleased. The ACT score was awesome, our proficiency. Keith is going to talk a lot about our academic and the achievement, and I appreciate it. So did I step on you? Just a little, very little. But I want to congratulate schools. And then I also want to talk about, I know the boosters are going to have their booster bash, I believe in January, and they're doing some kind of cool things that of course have a cake theme. So kind of, you know, I don't know if it's cake walk, cake contest, whatever. Ooh, what's going on here? But I want you all to be aware of that. And it's some, I think it's the end of January, do you know that?
I don't know exactly.
I think January. So we'll talk about that before. Okay, you want to clean up the other stuff and talk about?
Yeah, you know, it is, this is my favorite month, Thanksgiving, with, in November, and we have a ton to be thankful for here in Fort Thomas. We're going to see some great presentations from students, we're going to recognize our first homecoming parade in decades here in the fort, which was really awesome, on a great partnership with our city, and Zach's here today, not for that purpose, but I think it's important to give a shout out to our full community, that it was a group of students that were inspired to do something kind of cool and then engage the community and made it a full community effort. When I think about what I'm thankful for, and we think about the performance and the success of our students, it comes as a result of a lot of hard work on behalf of the community, on the families, on the students, on the teachers, on the administrators, to show up each and every day. And we made a commitment to be in person and valued that, and it was really, really, it was really a great thing. Celebrations at Santa House on this campus this past weekend, it was a really great turnout. Veterans Day programming all over the district were also something that was very fitting. And every school did it in a very different way, in a meaningful way towards their school, but also very thankful for the service of our veterans. Able to go to, I was able to go to Washington DC and celebrate with some of the Woodville, our Woodville friends, and we're going to do our presentation this coming Friday with the whole Woodville community. There's just, there's just a tremendous amount going on. I encourage everyone to come out on December 4th. We will have, we'll have some stops at the central office for our holiday walk, probably some things on the Highlands campus as well, we're still working some of that out, but for sure the central office will be there. And speaking on, you know, I think it was Julie that said, "A lot of great performing arts performances," but we had it all this month, in academics, in performing arts, in athletics, that whole well-rounded approach to education here in the fort. Look at your calendars, because all the holiday concerts are coming up as well. So a lot of really great things coming up.
Okay. All right, you good? All right, the next thing is, Mr. Durnell, are you going to come up and do the presentation for FCC LA?
So I nominated a group for the tradition excellence award, not an individual. Since I got here in 2021, the FCC LA program, it seems like they have their hands in everything. And it also feels like everything they touch is gold. When you look at what they did with resurrecting homecoming parade, and when I asked Ron Schwalbach about it, he said he doesn't remember having one since he graduated back in the eighties. And then he said he asked around and it went back decades before the eighties. So bringing back something that hasn't been here in 50 years. When it comes to going to national conferences like they just did in Columbus and getting second place finishes and third place finishes, our students have so many opportunities. And so it goes well beyond Ms. Wagner pouring everything she has into this program to make it an exceptional program nationally, not just in the state. It takes talented students and dedicated students that are willing to take the time and the effort to run embroidery shop, to fill orders out and about, to do a heat press machine in the middle of the football game. I'm sure that was probably one of your best fundraisers, it looked like it was top in the whole night. But then on top of that, the preschool, you know, we run a preschool the whole month of May. So, you know, these ladies and everybody affiliated with this program, they're constantly putting themselves out there for the benefit, not just of Collins High School, but they're doing service to our whole community. They're not just worried about what, how it reflects upon them, but also about how can they branch out and be something that the whole city of Fort Thomas can be proud of. So that is why I nominated them, and I'm glad to see them here.
That's great. Will you all introduce yourselves?
Hello, my name is Kathleen Price, senior in Texas.
My name is Addie Wagner, and I am also a senior. Do you see her like holes?
Yes, we love her.
Okay, so I'm Highlands chapter president and region seven president.
And then I'm our chapter vice president, first vice president.
And that lady behind you, maybe she'd introduce herself too.
I'm Erin Wagner, I'm FCC LA advisor and FCS teacher.
So Addie is, you know, Erin's daughter, for those of you who don't know. So I'm wondering, when was the first FCC LA national conference that you went to? How old were you?
I think I was in seventh grade, and I went to our national fall cluster meeting in Washington DC. So I think I was like thirteen.
She was actually two in Orlando.
Wonder where men.
Yes. So what are you all going to do next year? Do you know?
Well, so I was one of the main coordinators for the parade this year. And I want to thank Zach Rorber, and Sam Shelton. It would not have happened without them, and of course the community members, various teachers, and students of Highlands. Our plan for right now is hopefully to bring it back next year. We're going to talk about having a meeting in February to kind of head it through from there. I believe everything went pretty smooth. There's a few tweaks here and there that we want to see happen, but we have a few students lined up to, that are really eager to take on the parade and hopefully make this an annual thing.
We did try a parade in the early 2000s.
We did.
It was a little bit more like a-
It was like 2005 or '06.
It was more of a marching with some banners.
I think it was a pickup truck and driving around in circles is what it turned out to be. This one was a lot more impressive.
Totally got it.
You want to know about college?
Yes. No, I like, I was gonna follow up.
Every senior's favorite question.
Yes, yes.
I'm planning on being on the pre-law track, either at the University of Louisville or University of Kentucky.
And then I'm looking at fashion business, so if I go to UK, I'll probably do fashion merchandising and textiles with like a business major on the side.
Okay, staying in the family business, kind of. So how do you guys think your experience within FCC LA has helped you maybe prepare for those roles or think towards those directions for your future plans?
So I joined FCC LA in eighth grade, and I've been in this since, and I've taken on various roles. My public speaking abilities and the confidence I gained and the lessons I've learned about leadership through FCC LA has kind of spiraled into my track, Kentucky Team Core, I do a million and one things. And being able to take on this type of leadership roles have kind of fueled my passion. And that's now why I chose a major that I'm majoring in. So without FCC LA in eighth grade, I don't think I'd be on that as a student.
I'd honestly say that probably the same thing that Kathleen said, but just like becoming a leader and like, you have to like, through this club, you have to like, time manage really well and like know how to like do things at the same time. And I think that's definitely going to prepare me. But also just taking like FCS classes, like I take fashion, so I work in the bluebird embroidery business. I do like fashion things. I think that's helped me.
Very cool.
That's awesome.
Anybody have quick questions?
Great example of a tradition of excellence.
It really is, and I say this all the time, because I think you're getting awards all the, we have, we have, we bring you in periodically because you're doing such wonderful things. The one thing about this club that is so cool, it's totally student-driven. And, you know, as a former teacher, sometimes it's really good and sometimes it isn't. And so it's natural to kind of keep going in like with, you know, kind of a safety net. And you all grow so much from your successes and your failures and so forth. And the other thing, I predict, and somebody's going to have to contact Mrs. Wagner, I predict very early when you're speaking next year in college are going to say, "What did you do in high school that you're so comfortable being in front of groups and taking charge of things?" So please tell her that so she can tell me that, okay? So congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Addie, come out.
We have thanks.
You have a trophy.
I mean, I know it might get lost in all the other trophies.
It is a tradition of excellence award and recognition of providing encouraging outstanding service and leadership opportunities to the students of Fort Thomas Independent Schools.
And you're getting, there's some picture taking going on.
Oh yeah, mom's over here.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thanks. Okay, the next, we're going to ask Jody Johnson to come up and do the KDE Office of Educational Technology Stillwell Awards.
Good evening, everyone. This will be the first time that we have actually presented a Stillwell Award at Fort Thompson Independent Schools. So just a little bit of background for us. The Stillwell Award is named after the late William Bill E. Stillwell, who was a long-term faculty member of the University of Kentucky's College of Education. He worked diligently throughout his career to improve Kentucky K-12 educators and their access to modern technology. The Bill Stillwell Red Suspenders Award is the highest honor the KDE provides in educational technology, and it goes to either an individual, a group of individuals, or an organization who goes above and beyond the call of duty. Since 2008... Maybe? Since 2008, it might catch up with you. The award has been presented to some of these representatives here. So some, or some included university professors and teacher education programs, state organizations such as KISTI and KBT, state representatives who have champion legislation to promote educational technology, ed tech companies who have worked hand-in-hand with KDE, including Microsoft and Apple, and members of regional educational cohorts. So for the 20, in 2022 year, KDE has elected to use this award to honor the K-12 ed tech leaders in every district who during a very difficult time led our district through the COVID pandemic and ensured the technology forward to the district, providing a very positive possible education experience for all staff and students. So that is why they are recipients this year. So I have the honor tonight of representing the Kentucky Department of Education and reading the following proclamation. Named after the late William Stillwell, PhD, the Stillwell Award is presented to the unsung heroes that have gone above and beyond the call of duty in educational technology. They devote their efforts entirely to our K-12 students, teachers, and administrators. Identified by the red suspenders, the annual Stillwell Award winners represent the best of the best who show up daily in their tireless service to Kentucky schools and the high quality educational technology services that support the no required. For the year of 2022, a unique version of the red suspenders award, a meritorious medal in the form of a celebratory coin has been commissioned for presentation to critical K-12 education technology staffers. The distinctive coin signifies the individual's successful efforts from March of 2020 to March 2022, providing quality education technology service on and beyond the school campus for Kentucky's K-12 students, teachers, and staff and families throughout the 24 months of the core of the pandemic. The service provides a connection with students and families to their schools for the continuation of learning and student health skills. Therefore, let me know that the 2022 Stillwell Award is being presented here on November 14th, 2022, to the education technology leaders in Fort Thompson Independent Schools as a simple, sincere, heartfelt way to say, "Thank you for your accomplishments, your dedication, and your sacrifices over those 24 months." It now gives me great pleasure to ask the following people to come up to receive their coins. And as I call your name, if you can come up and just stand in front of the stage, cable there, don't turn over, and then I will present your coins. So Reece Zimmerman, Laura Robinson, Heidi Meltner, Brian Mercer, Chris Martin, Andrew Martin, Kevin Hester, Stephanie Griffith, Jason Gay, and Carrie Chikowski.
One, two, for the first picture, three, and then a second picture.
Yeah.
You might have had something to do with some of your knowledge.
I've been there, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Johnson did not report that he actually received one of these awards.
Well. Don't worry.
So in addition to those who've been named tonight, also mentioning that Matthew Winkler and I received our awards at a regional force, the Iowa meeting about a month or so ago. And Vance Godwin is also getting one, he is with Oak County Public Schools now, so he is receiving his coin from, from one of their presentations. Now, I may step off script for just a moment. I was at a technology meeting, and I was talking to our technology staff in that meeting. I said, you know, I was talking about the Stillwell Awards, and I said, "One thing is kind of a shame that we're getting these awards, but I don't really have any Stillwell Awards presented to the Board of Education." And I think that is a shame because really we were poised to be in such a much better position during the pandemic than any of the districts around us, and truly better than almost most of these districts in the entire country. And it was because this board, in addition to some previous board members who had served, going back all the way to 2012, 13, 14, when we were adopting the initiative, the visions, went for one-to-one programming. We were in a situation where all our staff, or all our teachers at least, and all of our students already had one-to-one devices, we had a learning management system. We had, we had electronic resources that we were already utilizing. I'm not going to say it wasn't tough, it was tough, it was tough for all of us. It was impossible to make perfect decisions, but we were in a much better position to make decisions than anyone around us because of those investments. And we truly were living that mission, vision of being rich in tradition and focused on the future. Although I don't think anyone, when they're saying, "Yeah, we need to buy this stuff just in case it's..." I don't think that happened, but part of being prepared for the future is just being prepared for what you don't know is going to happen. And I think this board did an excellent job for that. So I said, "It's a shame you don't have coins to present," and, and, you know, that's when the member of the technology department said, "You want coins, we can make coins." So the past month, I've been getting texts from Andrew Martin Garage during the evenings to approve and not approve different coins that are being made. So tonight, we have a coin from each of you, as far as I know, this is the first ever Fort Thomas Independent Schools minted coins.
No legal tender.
Thank you, that's awesome.
Thank you very much. Want to see Brad in our time future? I'll get a ticket.
This is neat, it's really cool, you do great work in the garage, that's awesome.
I want to see some of the designs that didn't make it.
This is cool though, I like it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Very cool, congratulations. The next one is Carrie Chikowski? Okay, we'll come up here and introduce the Woodville students in their presentation, please.
Hi, I'm Carrie Chikowski, and at Woodville, we've been actively working on our 100 years of Woodville being a school, Eric Fort Thomas. And we've got some amazing kids who have come up with some pretty creative things. Our question that was put forward to them was, "How can we as historians continue to preserve the legacy of Woodville for the next 100 years?" And putting that forward to the fifth graders, they had some brilliant ideas. We had everything from newspaper articles from every single decade to fifth graders wanting to write children's books about Samuel Woodville to encourage other kids to learn about Woodville. We had students who came up with a biopic, which is a biographical video. And we had students who came up with Minecraft and using Minecraft to preserve Woodville for the next 100 years, as is its current state. So I have some amazing students here, some fifth graders, that are going to come up and share their awesome work. I'm going to have Rockston and then come up first. Preston, sorry.
Hello, my name is Preston. Our teacher, Mr. Chikowski, and our principal, Mr. G., asked the fifth grade students to use technology to help us create and remember the past and current history of Woodville.
Hi, my name is Ben Low, and each fifth grade class is doing a different project to help us create the lasting memory of Woodville. Our project is to share what Woodville looked like when we were fifth graders.
Our area at, well, T is, was the area of the cafeteria. Other groups in our class have other areas in the school that they are in. We did our best to make a current copy of the Woodville cafeteria so that future generations could see what our school looked like. This is the Woodville cafeteria.
Our class decided that the best way to show our students is spray and replicate using micro. And for example, now, tell you about the stage in cafeteria, you can see that everywhere. I just want to say something, in the future, the texture packs might change or one difference. I don't know how we're going to do that.
Whatever that means. I have no clue. I know. We'll go with that. Can someone translate?
What was the screen there? Any leverage? It's going to take like a couple of minutes to load, because we build online and it gets laggy when we build live.
So we've been working on this for probably six weeks. So we have our third model.
We have made the tables and sinks out of bismarck grits, the blue ones, polished and sited. And cauldrons for the bottom of the chair for the rows. And sanding this seams except levers and levers. You know, we use the levers for the sinks. And the one, and the lever above is for the soap dispenser. Our social stage is a purse thing that we made. It's made out of objects ranging from black wool for the curtains and diamond ore for the floor. For the tabs, we decorated them to make, to make replicas as best as we could. I mean, it's what we can do with it. That is actually, coffee and paste. Yeah. Then over here by the kitchen, we have the condiment table. And then right there is where you get the mac and cheese. That's a little dispenser, and then you can get your trays out there. We use candles for the, the candles for the ranch, I heard, so I thought it looked good. And then once you walk in, this is where you choose your drink. Then you go over here and get your food. And we have here.
You have villagers and workers.
Yes.
We trap them inside of areas.
Yeah. But we don't do that to our cafeteria. That's great. Yeah, you don't want to leave it.
And then you can get your food over here, we use this to bake chips, like the chip bar. And then behind there is like a giant mixer that you can see when you're setting down your lunch menu. So we try to make that, that's all the tea there. And then you get, put your food here, put in your pen, and then you go right out from here. And this is where you put your tray out when you're done, with your food. Put it inside of the turnip. And it's some stints to lunch them, and then the trap, and then some trash cans.
We spent a lot of time going down, talking about scale, talking about looking for materials that would replicate what we currently have. Spent a lot of time going down, taking pictures, some measuring, and they did an amazing job of creating a very accurate version of Woodville for 100 years from now.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Miss Chikowski, but this group did the cafeteria. There are other groups in their class that are doing other parts of the building.
Right. They, the entire classrooms decided to do Minecraft, and they wanted to split up the different areas. So we have groups doing the library, we have groups doing the blotch boards, we have groups doing the flagpole area. So everybody has their own portion of the school that we go to. So, everybody has their own portion of the school that we go to piece together in the end through a screen recording, and be able to share later on this.
We were gonna like make the old cafeteria, but we couldn't really get our hands on the old blue prints. So, we just went with the.
You're right.
And we also based it off of when we booked at the cafeteria, when we went to lunch for like burgers, and then we built that. And then we started.
Are you guys coming, Miss J?
I will.
Yeah.
Thank you for letting us show you our digital interpretation of the Woodville cafeteria. Also, thank you, a special thank you to Ms. Chakowski and Mr. G., who supported us in creating this presentation.
And our next group is Santi and Logan, who are gonna come up, and they have created a biopic of Samuel Woodville's life. As a team in the fifth grade, their class decided to create and split a bit. One group is doing storybooks for children to maintain the Samuel Woodville's legacy. The other group is doing a biopic where they are, you guys have split?
Early life.
Early life?
More times.
More times.
And, like, a little bit of comic book.
As they call it, the old times. So, we are, they're going to present their portion of the biopic.
Hello, my name is Logan Wilford.
Hello, my name is Santiago Ramirez. For our portion of the project, our class is creating a bio epic of Samuel Woodville to share about all the amazing things he accomplished to, in order to have the school named after him. Some of our peers created different videos about the aspects of his life. Our video shares about his life during World War I, World War II, and the Philippine American War. We wrote this script after our research shot our roof. So, here is our world premiere of the video. Enjoy.
Is red carpet?
I know. We should dress a little better.
Samuel Woodville was elected into the army in nineteen oh one and was in three wars. He was in, he was one of the most decorated soldiers ever, meaning he has some of the most medals in the United States. The order of war, she was in, or the Philippine American War until nineteen oh four. The second war was World War I until nineteen nineteen. He was also a part of World War II until nineteen fifty-one. Although he was not in combat in World War II, he was an instructor because the military thought that it would raise morale for the soldiers. Also, he was in Alaska for a lot of his time in army, and he did the hunting for the heat. The highest rank Woodville was in was a master sergeant. The medals sent him with first seed were of Medal of Honor. The actual name was October twelfth, nineteen eighteen, in conference. He got many more medals and was a double hurrah winner. Woodville took helm, three machine gunners, and one with a big X. He used the big X because his lower tail was taken out. While in battle, he jumped in a bush for cover, but encountered by a German soldier who was pulling out a pistol. Before he shot Woodville, Samuel beat him and killed the officer. After the three wars he fought, Samuel Woodville retired from the army at the age of forty in nineteen twenty-three. He began farming in Indiana and lived the rest of his life with his wife, Florin.
Nice.
Thank you.
Get some questions?
Do you have questions? Anybody have questions?
Call them back up?
Yeah, come on back up. All of you together.
You like the dog picture?
Anybody have questions?
So, for the, for the video there, and maybe you said that, what was the picture in the background behind you?
That was Samuel Woodville when he got his Medal of Honor.
What year, what year was that?
Oh, it was, it's actually, it was nineteen, I forget the number. The actual date of when he got it was October twelfth, eighteen nineteen, in conference.
Got it.
Nineteen eighteen. And then, I'm gonna go out on limb, the cafeteria models and the use of Minecraft, you guys probably have a little bit of experience with playing Minecraft. Did that, how did that come about? Did, when you guys, the class, I guess, was discussing that?
We just like, I said, let's do something about Minecraft. Do something about Minecraft. Everyone, everyone.
And you just said it a lot. Well, and what do you think that's, if this is a project for students a hundred years from now, what do you think these projects will tell them about your fifth grade class or the students at Woodville now?
Their retro.
That's true. Yeah, that would probably be very dated.
It will think retro.
Right, that's true.
It was, it was, it was really hard also measuring of the blocks, because like, a chair, like, a block compared to your, your Minecraft, like, a block, a wooden block is probably like the size of half of you. So, chairs were really large, so were tables.
That's sounding like math.
It does.
Was there a little proportional? Yeah. So, you do use math, okay. Make sure your teachers know that.
Keep telling the story, gentlemen, where, the more that you tell your stories and the more you find different ways to do it, you'll find some passions that are gonna take you quite, quite a long way. So, thank you for, for telling the Woodville story and, and doing it in a super creative way.
Thank you.
Nice job.
I'll just add, too, that our finished product, all these projects created our one hundred year celebration night tomorrow.
Very cool.
All these are gonna be finished by then and it comes to you.
We have T-shirts. Are you gonna give them to Carrie? Yes. Yes, when you present, we give you a T-shirt, so we expect to see them at school someday. Very nice. Well, thank you very much. You did a good job. We're always amazed up here. I don't have kids doing Minecraft, so it was kinda interesting for me to see my, yeah, so it's very cool.
I know. I was very impressed with your professionalism in doing your speech. It's not easy to talk in front of a roomful of adults, and you did it with, you did it very, very well. Also, I'm assuming you used some type of programming techniques to do these? I don't know. Math, programming, and everything, but I know our teachers at the high school will be very interested in having you as students in your engineering or programming or, so stick with it. You guys are really good at that. That's good. Well, thank you. The next section is community forum, and we do not have speakers. So, before we go into the action items, if anybody wants to leave, I know you, it's a school night, so if you wanna take children, and then we'll start the business part of the meeting.
To board members.
Thank you. You have to stay. Thank you.
Thank you. Nice job. Is that one whole side of the menu?
I know.
I know.
Oh, look, he's getting closer. Trying to be efficient. All right, the next section is the Johnson Elementary Replacement, and Jerry, you're the speaker for the next couple of things.
So, as you know, even though this says Johnson Elementary Replacement, it's related to the parking lot that we built with the fieldhouse.
Mm-hmm.
That project is complete. We will shortly give you pay application number two. That is not the final pay application. Joe Hayes and I met on site today. We wanted to get through the first substantial rains, so we can see how all of the drainage worked, make sure everything was, was as it was, which we were able to record some data last Friday and make some observations, and then we met on site, did, put some things out. And Joe has a list, he has sent back to Michael, who would like to have, whether it's for active action taken, maybe level some rocks raised or lower, a bit of, you know, grading as it didn't, the water didn't flow as we would like, just very small things, very simple things to do. Once those are accomplished, we'll review that again, see how the drainage works with rain or snow, and then, you know, bring you the final pay application and complete the process of closing out the Johnson Elementary Project. Any questions?
So, moral of the story is this will be on the agenda once or twice more as we put a final.
Finish.
Okay.
So, we do have, are requesting approval of pay application number two from Paul Michaels and Sons for one hundred and eighteen thousand five hundred and nine dollars and fifty cents.
Simi, oh, I'm sorry. I forgot about you. Yeah, I need a motion for the approval of pay application two from Paul Michaels and Sons in the amount of one hundred and eighteen thousand five hundred and nine dollars and fifty cents for the Johnson Elementary Replacement Fieldhouse Parking Lot Project. Do I have a motion? So, move. Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay.
As we move, I believe, the next item is surplus property. Okay?
Mm-hmm.
So, eventually, ah, there we go. So, we have, as you know, we have been collecting items throughout the district, throughout the fall and the summer, that really we no longer need from equipment, furniture, technology need. So, as we do every once in a while, we bring you a list of these items, and this contains, I believe it's fifty-three, fifty-four different items, but there's a varying number within each item. In one case, there's one overhead projector on the list. There's, I believe, one hundred and forty-five, what I refer to as Verko series seventy-five student desks, that, you know, we do not anticipate having a need for. We have kept what we feel we need, but we wanted to put this out there to, you know, local educational entities to see who might have a need and who might be willing to purchase the funds. So, the first step in that is approving the list, which, you know, is an attached item on the lease of our online, declaring that itemized list as surplus property.
Okay, anybody have questions? Talked about this.
Yeah, just to state, we did, it was explored, sharing or giving items to the flood areas and they were not wanted or needed because of the distance, so that had been explored.
We did explore that. We collected a lot of stuff. We sent a list. There was a lot of communication back and forth, but what it, as you alluded to, those districts were able to acquire what they needed from school districts that were closer to them, and they could get more easily and at less expense than hiring tractors, trailers to come here and pick it up and take it down. So, we did explore that, and we were likely to do that, but they were able to fulfill their needs.
Good problem to have.
Yes.
Jerry, what happens if we don't, we aren't successful in getting, is what will we do with that? Because we don't have rooms.
If we do not sell it, then we, if we're able to dispose of it in any means we'd like, at that point, if someone has a need for it but doesn't put an offer in to buy it, and we know that, maybe it's a, a school with a very, you know, it's in a very difficult budget situation, once we've attempted to sell it, we can offer items, items for free. Some of these items on here will not sell because frankly, they aren't something that schools use these days. I don't know that we're gonna sell the overhead projector we have. So, because they're just modern technologies, taking over the need to have such items. So, there are likely some things on there that they sell, some for a decent price.
Jeff, you have any questions?
Nope.
Okay. I need a motion for approval to declare the attached itemized list of materials as surplus property.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay.
The second piece of that is, we've put together, as we usually do, similar to custodial products and other items, a document that will go out to, you know, we'll start with all of our staff and a lot of the local schools and local agencies. And we put that document out, and they'll have about a week or so to give us sealed bids back, and then we'll see what sells locally, and then if we still have a rather substantial list, we may broaden that and put it out through some agencies that, you know, either aren't as regional, maybe more statewide or interstate wide or even nationally.
Okay.
So, this is just requesting approval of that document that can be predominantly put together.
Okay. Questions at all? All right, I need a motion for the approval of the request for bids for surplus property.
Aye, so moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Jeff.
Yes.
Yeah, second.
Come back next one, the list of what we were able to get.
That's great.
Bids on it.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Jerry.
Thank you. Jody.
I don't remember how I saw this, Javel, this is a lot of.
Uh-huh.
So, every year, the Kentucky School Facilities and Construction Commission offers districts, offering assistance, and this offered assistance is specifically for items and services related to the type of education technology. So, the, there will be two offers this particular calendar year. The first offer has already been made, and then there will be an offer that will be very comparable in number, maybe not exact number, but very comparable number in the fall, so, I'm sorry, in the spring. And so, the, the offer that's been made to Fort Thomas Elementary School has been based off their eighty-eight, and the offer that we've received most recently is thirty-four thousand seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars. In order to accept that, it does require a report of education match that exact amount with local money. So, these, in the past, we have used this type of money for keeping staff devices up to date, since they're not like our student devices are. We used a significant portion this year just for some of the network upgrades that we're doing, and we'll continue to do that over the next few years. And we've also used it sometimes for professional development opportunities in the education technology, primarily for staff device upgrades and for network upgrades, is how we plan to use this money as we have in the past. So, what I would like to ask is that we're agreed to the maximum funds so that we can collect this offer of assistance from the Schools Construction Commission.
Okay, so anybody have any questions?
How's this number compared to last year or the year before?
It's very, it's very similar to the past two years. They, they do it based off students. I think this year's number is twenty-one dollars per eighty-eight, and I think last year was around twenty dollars, and the year before maybe eighteen dollars. So, you know, they, it is the typical thing, they always say, we don't know if we can do this next year. We don't know if we can do this next year. So far, in the past three years, they've been able to pretty much match it each year. But we told, we don't know if we can do this next year.
Right.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. I need a motion for the approval to accept and match the CAT's first offer of assistance in the amount of thirty-four thousand seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Simi, second?
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Passes, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna get into some discussion about testing. So, Jamie?
Yes?
All right.
We're gonna talk to you today about our kindergarten.
We want to talk to you today about our kindergarten students. And so we plan each year between the fifteen days prior to the first day of school and then the first month of school, we have an obligation as it comes from the state Kentucky Department of Education to screen all of our kindergarten students. And so we were able to do that and I am here to present to you the findings for this year. It's somewhat delayed so that we can make sure that we have all of our data submitted. There's a parent portion, so even though it's November, it's going to reflect on our August and September opportunities on our kids. Historical perspective, if you don't mind, so back just a second. It was that we started this in thirteen fourteen, so this is a new task for us as educators. It would help all new kindergarten students. And then we all choose as schools to do it after the beginning of school rather than prior fourteen days. We wait until, and it's typically the week right around Labor Day. Typically, the week right before would be the only schedule. And so then we work with our assistant principals and then Dr. Richardson, myself, would go out with the teachers and we all screen this at the schools during the school day to make this happen. And with that, along with the teachers, we have two components that our parents must complete and that is the part that gives us an opportunity to a little bit of time to submit. It's a Google form. We do want to make sure that we have all parents participate as well as the follow-up if there would be any speech or hearing screenings from the result of this. So working one-on-one will be able to meet with those students and make sure that we can understand them and if we need for further screening, we would report with a recommendation of that. If we look at the screen ourselves, there are five specific areas that we're looking at. Commonness and general knowledge, language communications, well-being, self-help and social emotional. And then for our results, we're looking at two hundred and four students screened this year. We actually had a hundred and sixty-nine ready, so we had fifty-six that were ready with the freshman, so that's beyond ready. We had a hundred and thirteen students ready and then we had thirty-five students not ready. The next slide then locks those together into percentages and shows you trend and data when we look at the number of students. So the percentage is all eighty-two percent ready, seventeen percent not ready. Very similar to twenty-twenty and even if we're looking back at twenty-nineteen, eighty and twenty. So it's very similar to past years. At that point now, the teachers have those results. The parents also should have the results as well. They've looked at the results and then carried forward some individual plans for the students with letter identification, numbers, number sense, those types of things. So we do have next steps within the classroom. Are we good?
Okay.
Any questions?
Are there ways to make these numbers better by coming in? I know we participate in like the imagination library and things like that.
That is a great first step, making sure that they have books at hand and number sense talking and truly engaging with our families that may not have students or may have other students in school. How can we make sure that they are engaging and having opportunities for those? We do connect with our preschool around and they are aware as well as the library. We consider at kindergarten registration, which is early January, we give them information at that time. So that's six months ahead of the beginning of school of what those student records are. And these are very much age-appropriate skills. We're talking about naming, build letters. We're looking at counting techniques, those kinds of things. We're looking at one correspondence. And so making sure that parents have checklists is crucial too. So we give those to them as a developmental cue to see if they need extra support set up.
And you said we do communicate with, I mean, we have a number of preschool programs. Obviously, they're aware and working towards those.
Yes.
Is, Jamie, is there a reason why they changed it from beginning of school for the testing until a couple of weeks into the year?
We felt like from past experience, I would say that coming in prior to the first day of school, there's some anxiety that our students have about even knowing the person that's sitting next to them. So giving them a couple of weeks to get used to working with others, getting into that school frame of mind rather than the very beginning of August when they are coming off the, we have swimming pool activities and then having to shift into work with an adult that they don't even know in an environment they don't know. We felt like it was more beneficial to do the after-school administration.
Okay.
It has been pretty important to really focus on the pre-school, pre-K experiences that our students have and as Jamie mentioned, we have had some outreach areas. Our leadership implementation team, as part of our strategic focus in the area of achievement, actually had this very conversation about what are some of the measurements and indicators of success for as a district? If we're going to be that destination district and really focus on a ten-year approach towards achieving excellence. So we have to look at where our students are coming in in addition to how they're leaving us after graduation. So there's some definite attention on that very area as well. Is that right, Liz? Is that correct?
And I would want to mention too that, you know, we have a small population that are previous preschoolers as well. So we have our own, you know, forty to fifty students are coming home and going into our kindergartens from that preschool experience. So those teachers know first again what the expectations are, work well with the transitions to different schools. So they not be either Johnson or now lawyer where they're coming from and making that an easier transition into that kindergarten classroom.
And that could be just to tie in, you know, a good, I'm sure probably already does happen, no one knowing Ms. Wagner, but with the FCC LA is they're working with those preschool programs that they run and they can communicate and share and even work with and brainstorm ideas for getting that out there even more.
That's a great idea. It's always a good suggestion.
That, I think they would, they would like that to even know what was tested for kindergarten readiness, that the kids could even, the little, you know, the high school kids could look at that. I think it's a great idea. Yeah, that is a great idea. Thank you.
Hey, thanks, Jerry.
Okay, Keith?
Okay, good evening, everyone. Thank you for giving me your time today to talk to you about the great things that are happening in our school in regards to Kentucky sub- and assessments. So the data was released mid-October for our internal review of that information embargo where our leadership team was able to observe the scores and kind of a self-analysis of where we were. And then since then, we've had public release and we're able to kind of share their school scores and share their success with our school community and across the state. That's what I'm here to do tonight. So just as a real quick recap of where we are in state Kentucky with our state accountability system currently, we have moved to a model where we have five colors that are representative of schools' priorities, with red being the most urgent level and most greatest level of concern for our schools across Commonwealth, always to blue, which would demonstrate excellence of school community, specific school or school community or in or district for our case. So anywhere in between that is, you know, would be kind of the measuring of success that a school or district would have represented by those colors. And just a reminder, this year, it's only status. And so for the scores that were reported this year, it's status only. The following year, I'll kind of allude to that, but it's going to be status and growth. And so this year, the first year of the accountability system, we're just looking at where are you at this point in time? And we're using these colors to indicate your level of success. To determine that level of success in that color coding system, we have accountability areas that we have. And you see at the elementary and middle schools, you have three areas. We're looking at a combination of reading and math, science, social studies, combined writing. And when I talk about combined writing, I'm talking about editing mechanics and then on-demand writing opportunities. We'll also talk about English learner progress for our schools that have a population of students that fall into that demographic. Quality school climate and safety surveys. So there's two surveys that take place. Students in grades three through five take a school safety survey, which is about thirteen to fourteen questions, and take a cool school climate survey, which is also thirteen to fourteen questions. And so that's a representative of four percent of your school's total accountability. And then our high schools, we're looking at post-secondary readiness and then four and five-year graduation cohort rates. So those elements are the things that make up your school's overall score, which would fall in one of those colored categories. So that's just a real quick recap. The state of Kentucky pulled a group of superintendents and leaders across the state to determine what would index scores be. And so when you hear me talk about index scores, you would see that this range goes all the way from zero up to on the high end of the blue, seventy-nine at elementary, seventy-one at the middle and seventy-eight and or more. So anything above that seventy range, you see they would be blue, which would be where we're all shooting for eight, right? That would be the blue level, the highest level of state Kentucky that you can attain. We'd be that mid-seventy mark. That would be shooting for in terms of overall school score. And that takes all five of those areas, for high school, three of those areas. At the elementary and middle school, we're shooting for an index at that, at that range. So I just wanted to let you know where those kind of cut scores were and those would determine about a state. And so now what I'd like to do is just kind of go through our overall results. This was not a mistake on our part. There's a lot of blue on that screen intentionally. We had each school in our district, you know, attain the highest level of excellence that we could have. We all met that destiny of blue. And so I got a little bit deeper into the numbers and talked about how we got there. And so really proud of the work of our school, of our community, our students, teachers, administration to help us reach that, reach that level of blue attainment. Certainly something proud of because it was not, it was not something that was given out easily. Certainly you had to work for it and many of our colleagues across the Commonwealth struggled to meet those proficiency benchmarks, but our schools did a fantastic job. I like that. So here on the side, so the bottom there, if you remember, that's, you've seen that graphic? That's the overall index highlighted up and down there. And here are the scores. So for the Highlands High School, you see five areas that were utilized to get that overall index score. So you see the combined reading and math, science, social studies, creative writing, or excuse me, combined writing, quality school climate survey score, post-secondary readiness, graduation score, and then your overall score, ninety-point-four. And I just wanted to highlight that. That seventy-eight or more for the high school, that's what got you the blue attainment. Our score was at a ninety. And so we far surpassed that and, you know, our high school did a fantastic job. I also just want to add to this, and Mr. Garnett, if you can, talk about this post-secondary readiness and graduation. We are literally tenths of a point in, two tenths or three tenths of a point away. And I got to have this conversation with each of our principals. When you get to that level of specificity, that level of detail, you can really talk about each individual student. And every kid matters and it's so important to that. We're able to actually change some of that. We had an opportunity, a ten-day window. We're able to kind of go back and find some scores where students had graduated, which impacted that. And I'll have to report that all of those levels at high school are now recorded currently, present day, as a blue. And so we've reached all of those areas. So really a big shout-out to high school staff and students and parents for your job. We've gone down to middle schools. Again, you see their designations at the three areas. So reading, math, combined, science, social studies, combined writing, survey, and the overall score of eighty-one. Again, so comfortably in the level of blue there. So they've really reached the highest level of attainment that a middle school could have on this recent case. They did a super proud of their work and excited to report that out. I'll just kind of add on to this. Those each indicator scores, there were levels. I did not share that with you, but each of the academic or content areas demonstrated content level proficiency index cutoff scores. And again, we were really comfortable in that blue. So it wasn't like we just made it in those levels. And each of our schools, we were really comfortable in the blue. So did a fantastic job. Johnson Elementary, again, you're seeing a trend here. A lot of blue up on the screen. Want to highlight their reading, combined reading and math scores were really, really high. They did a fantastic job. Really be wise of us to do some research of the type of instructional strategies that are taking place there in this specific area of reading and math. At Johnson, they did a fantastic job. So again, the score of eighty-nine point seven, overall score, really put in that blue category. Moyer Elementary, again, following the trend here, very high, all the way across the board in each of those areas, overall score. I think a two-point-three. And again, kind of going back, that cutoff score, you do see the yellow one there, but that quality school survey, again, I think that was a tenth of a point, but they just missed that, getting into that green range. So again, it's just everything. And I will say on this, when you look at some of those question stems, it was a little bit frustrating. It was like double negatives. I'm an English major, but it says, you know, like not within the question stems. It was potentially confusing. So I think when you're looking at one tenth of a point, I like to say that was, you know, a bad question. But again, really, really proud of our students there to reach the level of attainment. So super high. And then finally, the last school in the district, Woodville, again, were able to reach those designations. Each of those areas, overall score of eighty-one point three. And so again, just another example, a school that was comfortably in the range there above the seventy-nine. It really testament that the students worked and the teachers, administration, well, the teachers. They did work there. So overall, really pleased with the work they did. This upcoming year, there is a difference. We are going to talk about status, which is what we just did. And then we're going to talk about change. And so the state of Kentucky has a system where you see where we're going to be. It's going to be difficult for us to increase. You saw how high our numbers were. It's going to be really difficult for us to increase significantly. So if you look at the top right there, math people, I think that's like quarter of one. To increase significantly is going to be a real challenge in each of those areas academically. But certainly there is room for improvement. And so I do feel like there is opportunity to increase and certainly maintain. And so I feel like I've not been told if that means like going from one level to the next is going to represent a decrease or if we're talking tenths of a point would constitute a decrease. So I'd like to think that there's going to be some wiggle room. You have to drop from very high to high to be considered a decrease, but I've not been able to report that out yet. I feel like all of our schools are positioned really well, not only this year, but in future years, to maintain that beautiful blue color that we all like. Any questions for me about our test scores for the assessment?
I would just say that they're, they're great. I mean, Anne touched on the KDE scores that came out earlier this month as well. I mean, it's just, I know we celebrate and I know there was some cake in the schools for celebration for, for that. And I don't know if we celebrate enough. I mean, I think people expect us, and they should. They expect us to have the best scores and have the best education around and then keep going. But I, I don't know if we can say thank you enough to our, our teachers and administration that made this happen. I mean, the community made sure their kids were focused and it was a hard couple of years. But and our teachers in the schools, I mean, they did an awesome job, just coming right out of that. Keep making sure our kids were learning and, like I said, I don't know if we can say thank you enough because what we saw the last couple of weeks has come out of, you know, for the testing that we've been doing. It's just, it's just awesome. So I'd just like to say thank you.
And you do, I mean, these presentations happen this time of year and every school board across the state and around the nation. But you're hearing a lot of those asterisks. Well, we were yellow, we're orange, but that, you know, because of how things were and obviously they were. I mean, that's a reality and it does have an effect, but to that point, you're not, we're not having that discussion here. So I think that is a testament to what Jody presented on our, you know, our tech preparation. You know, we weren't scrambling as a district to get devices into kids' hands. They already knew programs. They were comfortable with them. They could use them. And we were getting kids in school as much as possible as well, trying to maintain that challenge of safety. But also realizing face-to-face instruction was.
The best.
Was the best.
It was.
And we're seeing it all the way across as well from elementary all the way up through middle and high. So it's great.
And so for me, two things. When the scores came, they were embargoed, so we did, I couldn't know what they were. But nationally, all the news was going around and they were saying fourth graders proficiency on math and, you know, we're forty-five percent or whatever. So I called Keith and said, tell me where we are. Are we going to be? And he said, we'll be fine. That's all he said is we'll be fine. So I was very happy.
He was supporting with that, that he didn't get embargoed.
I do. I like that. You weren't, you weren't, yeah, you weren't playing your cards for me, but, but that was awesome. And the second thing is when you have high scores, to your point, it's about specific people. You know, if you've got low scores, you can kind of tweak something and bring a group. But the fact that all the principals have that data and are looking at it, you really have to go after, you know, this surprises me. What can we do to bring this child up? What can we do to have this child graduate or whatever? So. So, um, that's the next part of this that I love that you're working on as well.
You know, this is a, this is a, a great testament to a, to a whole community effort. And, and I, and I believe we said this early on in, in the, in the bravos, um, but the, the top K-12 scoring district in, in the state. I think Anchorage is K, K-eight, so we're gonna put the, the high schools in there too. Um, but that, that's a whole, the whole package. And so the Board of Education and your support of, of their efforts, uh, of, of, we've seen technology presentations. We've talked about facilities. We've talked about resources. It's really important that we look at each individual student when we, when we talk about test scores and we have expectations. We're already finding the areas that, that we can continue to improve upon in, in that continuous improvement cycle. But it's also about the presentations you saw from our students. It's, it's about the advocacy and, and connection within the community. It's about those experiences and opportunities that they'll have as well. So it, it will be all of it. Um, and, uh, and we're, we're excited about, um, starting even before they get into kindergarten and, and giving them world-class opportunities beyond. So, thank you, Keith, for, for your...
Okay, are you doing the next one too?
So it's really nice segue into, uh, continued improvements. So we'll talk about, um, our C dip. That talks about our district improvement plan. And so, yes, we have our scores, but what do we do next? And honestly, the school improvement plan starts off with a needs assessment. And so when you go back and you look at some data, um, it's one piece of data we can analyze as Kentucky Southern Assessment. But we know we have multiple measures, multiple pieces of data and information that we wanna look at that's gonna help drive this district improvement plan. And so, you know, when we talk, talk about a contin- continuous improvement, according to state Kentucky, we're really looking to follow these five buckets in terms of how do we develop this plan and what does that look like? And the very first one is this data analysis. And so, yes, Kentucky Southern Assessment is one thing, ACT is one thing. But we also need to look at, you know, student social, emotional well-being. We need to look at their attendance. We need to look at, you know, participation rate, extracurriculars. So looking at all of these, these pieces of data help drive some of our school improvement, which is leading to our school improvement plan, which is what our LIT teams are doing. It's a really comprehensive approach. And so it all starts with this needs assessment. And so looking at data analysis is one thing that we, we will do when we look to create this, uh, improvement plan. We need to go back and look at our twenty-one, twenty-two school improvement plan and say, okay, here's the plan that we put forth. How do we do? What steps can we enact? What did we implement? Which ones did we execute? Which ones did we possibly fall short on? And so that is a part of the process that we're doing. So this needs assessment, uh, has been done. We've gone back. We've made the review. We've looked at things we've done, some steps that we've taken. We've done, um, you know, a comprehensive plan and layout. Thank you, board, for allowing us to do curriculum adoption and curriculum, curriculum work on an annual cycle. And so that's a part of the twenty-one, twenty-two assessment. We've done textbook adoption in math for our K through five, for our high school English department did textbook adoption. And so those were all things that were slated in last year's, uh, improvement plan that we've done and that we're looking forward to. You know, I alluded to those LIT teams, uh, leadership implementation teams to execute our strategic plan. Those things are in place. They were part of our strategic plan last year, and we follow through. So as a new person coming into the role, it was great to go back and reference that and look at our improvement plan and say, okay, what was the path that we set ourselves on to get into attaining the success that we had five minutes ago that I was able to share? It's like all buried along. Um, we have to do a current state. Uh, so part of the needs assessment is to kind of do a state of the union or a state of assessment of where are we? And so that was part of the needs assessment that we did. And so that is looking at our, you know, some of our accountability scores in comparison with our, um, schools across the state and really report on that specific data. What was our percentage students in, you know, proficiency, uh, in reading and math, science, social studies, you know, ACT? How do we compare? And so those elements exist. From that, we need to identify what are our priority areas. And we do have areas for growth. And it really does get down to that, looking at each individual student, where can we meet their needs? And so, you know, working with Slayery's going with NTSF, our building principals are going, creating a district leadership team to really say, okay, what are the different tiers of intervention? Need to put in place, but not just intervention, what are the areas of enhancement that we can do to move our, our stronger students forward? So, um, identifying those priority areas across the district to move forward. And then, again, being reflective, what are the strengths that currently exist? When we look at schools like Johnson that are really knocked out of the park in the reading math, what strategies? What programs? What, um, techniques are they utilizing? Do they have anything there that can be replicated district-wide? So, uh, really look at their strengths and levers. Uh, so really comprehensive look at our district is what the needs assessment is all about. So there are four phases when we talk about our school improvement plan. Uh, and this phase two is probably the second most, uh, labor-intensive, but we're really looking at all five of those areas to do that needs assessment. And I'm just here tonight to report out to you that that has been done and, um, check the marks for that. The next part is district funding assurances. This is my favorite part to do because it's one button. Uh, and so, yes, we are, uh, being fiscally responsible with, uh, all of our monies that we are giving for allows each school district to have or school to have. And so you see the KR, uh, or excuse me, KR, K-A-R. That's referenced there, um, in terms of that. And so it just states that we, as a school district, are being responsible with the monies that are given to us, um, to execute our plan. So district funding assurance is. The next is the district's safety report, and we do that as work actually is done with Slayery and her team, uh, at the beginning of the year. When, uh, schools meet with their councils, and we have a, a district team that we sit down and look at, okay, we have school safety plans that are in place. We communicate these plans, uh, not only to our building, uh, leaders, but to our community stakeholders as well. So we have partnerships with our police and fire department, and we talk about what will we do in the event of, you know, a horrific tragedy, and, you know, what would it look like if first response? And so we have those meetings that we do here. Obviously, we can't share the details of those plans. And I'm here to report out to you that those meetings have been in place. We've got all that compliance fees. All of our, all of our buildings, uh, building leadership, principals, administration, students, um, are practicing those drills and procedures on our, on our district basis throughout the year. And then the last part is, uh, phase three, uh, so that's the C dip. And so each school is working on their comprehensive school improvement plan presently, of all of those things that I talked about. So I talked about it from like a district level. Those exact same things are taking place at the school level, where they're writing goals. They're looking at data. They're writing goals. They're doing a self-check of where they are. And they're creating, um, a, a plan that will come to place, gather those items, create a district plan. And that's what we'll report out, moving forward. The deadline for that is January first. And so we can get it, building level leadership to create the school improvement plan, ultimately create the district plan by January one. Any questions, Paul?
Any questions?
That's very good.
No? Thank you. Thank you. I know you all have been busy. Alright, the next is, uh, board committee updates. Does anybody have an update on a committee?
No.
I think the audit, I'm trying, my meeting's running together, but audit committee met, uh, this past month, and the audit is currently ongoing, right? Are we almost done?
Should be reported out this Sunday.
Okay, so audit's going on right now, uh, so that should be good. And I think budget may be met since the last board meeting. Did we?
Uh, we may have met in September.
September, yeah.
Okay, alright, then skip that one.
None of mine.
None of yours. Yours are kind of...
Minor, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, second half of school, centric.
Or I was, maybe you had assigned me to...
Yeah.
I won't take it.
That's good. Or anything else? Okay, so the consent approval. With all board members having had the opportunity to review and pursue any questions about all the items contained therein, approval of the consent agenda. I need a motion for that.
Someone?
Second?
My second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Alright, and then the next part is, um, new business. Do you have anything?
Another business?
No, we're good.
At Thanksgiving.
Lots, lots of stuff going on before the next board meeting.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of, uh, events throughout. All five schools really have, uh, they have student events. We have our Blue Ribbon Ceremony Friday, um, a lot of concerts coming up. It's, and, uh, we're starting winter season.
Yep, winter sports start. I saw Bowing's got matches this week.
Yeah, basketball.
Basketball's starting soon.
Alluring, so.
That's good. Alright, if there are, we're good with new business, then, uh, we can adjourn this meeting. We are adjourned.